Well, good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's February 2nd, 2003 Open Session. First, Ms. Costa, can you please take the roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Kozar?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Argo?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Hewlett?
Here.
Chair Goodman?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Vice Chair Dixon?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash? I think he is not attending today. And Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Thank you. And I note that Marcela Costa, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, the Director of the Urban Design and Plan Review Division, are also in the meeting. Thank you, Ms. Costa. Thank you very much. And noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today's meeting is being livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on the NCPC's website. If there's no objection, the agenda as posted is adopted and is the order of business. We will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. NCPC will continue to conduct its meetings online until the renovations on the commission chambers are complete. I want to share how we will be conducting commission business. During commission deliberations, I will use the round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any comments. As a reminder, during deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. At other times, when commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute and ask. The next agenda item, number two, is the report of the chair. And so I would like to introduce myself. I am Terry Hawks Goodman, as you know, and it is my honor to have been appointed as the at-large representative and as commission chair by President Biden earlier this year in January. And I've had the opportunity to speak to several commissioners, and I've worked closely with the Executive Director, Costa, and the agency staff to get up to speed on how the agency and the commission conduct business. And I've also learned a lot about the exciting initiatives that NCPC has underway. And frankly, these first few weeks have been a bit overwhelming, but also very inspiring. I am from Dubuque, Iowa, on the banks of the Mississippi River, and I have a long career in public service, and I've worked in community building, which is my passion. And I've touched on all aspects that create and shape cities and communities, including transportation, equity, and sustainable development, environmental resilience, and particularly water resource matters, and also technology. And as Chair, as I said in my letter to the commission, I will maintain a laser focus on the this administration's priorities of equity and climate resilience. My personal passions, as I said before, include access and inclusion, climate resilience, historic preservation, and also partnership, because I do believe partnerships and collaboration are essential to success in many endeavors that we all pursue. I look forward to keeping people at the heart of our work throughout my career to make things happen. It's been critical to bring people together, to find consensus, to listen and work collaboratively. And I seek to have our commission meetings welcomed and open to engaging the public, and I appreciate our applicants, and we look forward to treating them all with respect and dignity. And most importantly, I will look forward to working with all of you, particularly the commissioners, and I thank you for the warm welcome that you have extended to me. So, thank you very much. Agenda item number three is the report of the Executive Director. Mr. Costa, please.
Thank you, Chair Goodman, and good afternoon. First, on behalf of the staff, I'd like to welcome Chair Goodman to NCPC. Congratulations on your appointment, and we look forward to working with you. NCPC has just released its 2022 Year in Review Report, looking back at the past year's activities and looking ahead to doing continuing efforts. We've had a really busy 2022, including the release of the Pennsylvania Avenue Concepts, the announcement of Beyond Granted, and review of many significant master plans and projects in this region. The annual report is publicly available on NCPC's website. You have my written report in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Does the commission have any questions? Hearing none. Agenda item number four is the Legislative Update. Miss, oh, I'm sorry, there is a question. I'm sorry.
I didn't have a question, but I wanted to say, as the, along with Brian Green, we were the newbies before you, Madam Chair, and I found the Year in Review particularly helpful, because it encompassed so much that we were not able to see. I really wanted to say kudos to you on the Year in Review. And since I have the floor right now, may we say welcome, Chair Goodman. We're so happy to have you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Commissioner Hewlett. Are there any other questions? Well, hearing none. Agenda number four is Legislative Update. So, Ms. Anne Skyler, if you could, please make that report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just start by saying, on behalf of all staff, welcome, and we're just thrilled that you are here, and we look forward to working with you, and I'm sure you will have a very successful tenure. I do not have a legislative report today. It is very early in the 118th session of Congress, such that there has been no legislation that relates or impacts NCPC introduced at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skyler. Agenda item number five is the Consent Calendar. There is one item on this month's consent calendar, and it's approval of the preliminary site and building plans for Fort Belvoir North Area Headquarters Annex. This project was submitted by the Department of the Army. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar items?
So move.
There is a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think I'm going to ask Ms. Costa to clarify. Sure. Commissioner Dixon, perhaps?
Yes, that was, the motion was made by Commissioner Dixon, and I believe the second was made by Commissioner Hewlett. And if you would like, I can proceed with the roll call.
Yes, if you could confirm the motion, the second, and proceed with the roll call. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Sure. Commissioner Kozar?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Presuming this motion is to pass the consent calendar, since we're, you know, jumping the gun here, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda item 6A is a request to approve comments on the concept master plan for Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall, including Fort McNair. Ms. Herr?
Yes. Can you see the screen?
Yes, and we can hear you.
Great, thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. The United States Army has submitted their 2021 Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall and Fort McNair Area Development Plan for Concept Review and Comment by the Commission. The Commission previously approved a master plan in 2014. Today, we are looking at the concept review of the Area Development Plan for Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall and Fort McNair. Concept reviews are intended for larger or more complex master plans to get feedback from the Commission earlier in the master plan development process. At the concept review for the master plan, the Commission should be focused on issues such as, is the concept consistent with NCPC's comprehensive plan and other policies? Is the concept appropriate for the site? Are there particularly unique or complex issues? The Area Development Plan is for Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall. The Joint Base includes two locations: Meyer Henderson Hall in Fort Meyer, Virginia, and Fort McNair in southwest Washington, DC. Meyer Henderson Hall is located immediately west of Arlington National Cemetery in the Pentagon. Fort McNair is located at the confluence of the Washington Channel and the Anacostia River, across the Anacostia from Joint Base Anacostia Bowling. There's a lot to cover, so this presentation will focus on the overview of the Area Development Plan first, or ADP. And as there are two separate bases in two jurisdictions, I will then review each base separately, including a general overview of the key components of the ADP and specific areas of concern. The proposed vision and goals of the ADP include maintaining a safe, secure, resilient, agile, and compact community that is responsive and supportive to mission partners in the region, maintaining and strengthening partnerships with surrounding communities, enhancing quality of life, and managing integrated infrastructure, and retaining historic character and resources. The current ADP is a combination of individual vision and goals and area development plans for each base that were developed in 2016 and 2017, and then combined into the current ADP. Overall, the Commission comments favorably on the goals and objectives presented in the concept submission for the Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall. There are several things, including a transportation management plan, that the Army will need to complete as part of the next ADP submission, all of which is outlined in the Executive Director's Report, and I will cover in this presentation. As noted here, the Army completed individual ADPs for Meyer Henderson Hall and Fort McNair in 2017, and combined them into the current ADP in 2021. The Army also signed the Nationwide Program Comment on Interwar Air Housing in 2020. At the completion of the current ADP, the Army drafted the Unaccompanied Enlisted Personnel Housing Barracks Addendum for inclusion with the ADP's concept review by the Commission. A full review of the barracks is expected later this year, and an updated ADP is anticipated no earlier than 2024. In the next few slides, I will give an overview of Meyer Henderson Hall and the details of the ADP concept review. Meyer Henderson Hall is home to several Army and US Marine units, including Headquarters for the Joint Base, Command Battalion, and Marine Corps, as well as the US Army Band, the Old Guard, the Radar US Army Clinic, and A Company, or the Commander in Chief's Guard. The northern portion of the base is primarily, is primarily army-focused mission, and the southern portion is Marine Corps missions. Directly to the east is Arlington National Cemetery, and to the west are residential and commercial developments in Arlington County. Due to its proximity to Arlington National Cemetery, this is also the base of operations for most Honor Guard services and burial teams. A large percentage of burials in Arlington National Cemetery originate from the old post chapel pictured here. In addition, the military's largest child development center, named the Cody Child Development Center, is located in the Henderson Hall side of the base. The base has three entry points labeled in yellow and access directly to Arlington Cemetery, noted in green. The site analysis of the Area Development Plan shows the focus of various areas of the campus and buildable and non-buildable open space. A majority of the land is planned for community support, noted in blue, and mission support in purple. As indicated here in yellow, the Fort Meyer National Historic Landmark District includes a large portion of the north end of the base. In 2014, additional areas shown in blue were identified as eligible for inclusion in the historic district, but have not yet been added. Overall, the concept Area Development Plan includes only 182,888 square feet of new construction and over a million square feet of renovation, with almost no demolition. Renovated buildings are labeled in blue on the plan, and new buildings are in orange. Much of this renovation focuses on mission-critical facilities, and the Commission supports the proposed renovation projects throughout the campus, including renovations to barracks, general officer quarters, community facilities, important infrastructure, and establishing a centralized one-stop-shop for base personnel. While the ADP was meant as a comprehensive plan, which incorporated both bases, the ADP's scope did not include a detailed analysis of Army family housing or barracks. The Army is focused on improving the quality of on-base housing and increasing the quantity. As such, the Army submitted an addendum to the 2021 ADP that addresses barracks housing. The Army is developing a family housing plan that will be submitted separately. Meyer Henderson Hall currently has a 200-bed deficit in permanent barracks for service members of the US Army and US Marine Corps. The Unaccompanied Enlisted Personnel Housing Barracks Addendum outlines five different courses of action the Army analyzed to meet the requirement for 200 new housing units. Course of Action 1 called for the full demolition of Buildings 250 and 251, noted here, to construct a new barracks building. This option removed two historic buildings, and the site was not large enough to accommodate 200 units. Course of Action 2 extended Buildings 250 and 251 with additions. However, it is too difficult to bring current Buildings 250 and 251 up to residential housing standards, and the additions would not generate the total 200 units needed. Course of Action 3 would demolish Buildings 410 and 412, which are located here, and construct new barracks on the site. The site was deemed too small for this option. Buildings 250 and 250 would be converted to administrative space in this option. Course of Action 4 would demolish Building 416 for a new barracks building. It was deemed the site was too small, and as 416 is currently housing, it would not meet the overall unit goal. Again, Buildings 250 and 251 would be converted to administrative space. Course of Action 5 would demolish Buildings 426 through 432 and 434 through 436, and construct two new barracks on the site. As with prior options, Buildings 250 and 251 would be converted to administrative space. While this course of action technically has no impact on the existing historic district, it does impact historic structures. The Army determined that these quarters fell under the Program Comment for Interwar Era Housing Buildings and Structures and Landscapes, landscape features from 1919 to 1940, otherwise called the Program Comment. This agreement between the Army and the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, signed in 2020. This slide is a combination of Course of Action 5, which we just reviewed, overlaid on the historic district boundaries of Fort Meyer. The yellow line includes Buildings 250 and 251, and is the Fort Meyer National Landmark Historic District boundary. The blue line that includes most of the buildings planned for demolition in Course of Action 5 is one of the areas determined eligible for the National Register of Historic Places expansion of the Fort Meyer Historic District. The orange line demarcates the area that is covered by the Program Comment. The Program Comment is intended to balance historic preservation requirements with the Army's responsibility to provide quality housing for military members and their families. The Program Comment outlines the process by which the Army can demolish certain buildings as part of their Section 106 responsibility. Course of Action 5 was chosen as the preferred option, because the buildings proposed for demolition, in red, while historic, are outside the historic district. The pool and pool facilities have been closed for some time with no plans to reopen, and the quarters on Sheridan Avenue are a style already represented in the historic district. NCPC staff, along with staff from the Virginia Department of Historic Resources, have found that thus far, the Army is correctly following the process outlined in the Program Comment. And the courses of action included, courses of action included in the addendum are prudent and feasible alternatives, as required by the Program Comment, and the recommended course of action is appropriate for the campus. The addendum includes two equal-sized U-shaped barracks buildings, similar in size and shape to Buildings immediately north. The layout includes connecting walking paths and a small parking area. The barracks addendum stated the tree removal is proposed with a two-to-one replacement mitigation method, and the Commission requests the ADP be updated to reference the NCPC tree preservation and replacement policy outlined in the federal elements of the comprehensive plan. The architecture is intended to coordinate the adjacent barracks buildings. As the Army is finalizing the details of the barracks for project submission, the Commission requests the Army work with NCPC staff in advance of the unaccompanied enlisted personnel housing barracks submission to ensure the project's design, scale, and landscaping is appropriate for the Fort Meyer Historic District. In addition, the Commission recommends the Army update the ADP to include the barracks project and address any other applicable changes to the plan impacted by the barracks. Now, I will review Fort McNair, located in Washington, DC. Fort McNair was established in 1791 and is the third oldest military fort in continuous use. It is home to the Military District of Washington Headquarters, the National Defense University, the National War College, as well as the White House Transportation Agency. In the upper-left picture is an example of existing general officer quarters on the Washington Channel, which we will discuss later in the presentation. The existing seawall at the south end of the base, along with the Grant Building and Roosevelt Hall, are also pictured. The base has two gates labeled with the yellow star. Due to its low-lying location at the confluence of the Washington Channel and Anacostia River, McNair is incredibly susceptible to both the 100-year floods shown in red and the 500-year flooding in orange. In addition to flooding risks, the base is at risk from sea level rise, with the southern portion and waterfront edges most impacted. The District Department of Transportation, District Departments of Transportation and Energy and Environment, submitted a consolidated comment letter on the ADP that included concerns regarding a riverwalk trail, lack of floodplain and sea level rise planning or mitigation, among other things. The Commission requests the Army coordinate with the District Department of Transportation and the Department of Energy and Environment on the comments outlined in their letter dated January 17, 2023, prior to the next ADP review. The regulating plan indicates the focus of various areas of the campus, including the mission support area at the northern end, and the educational support, as examples. As noted here in blue, most of the base is included in the District of Columbia's Inventory of Historic Places as the Fort McNair Historic District. Fort McNair has also been determined eligible, but is not listed on the National Register of Historic Places. However, as indicated by the yellow boundary at the southern end of the base, the Army War College Building, pictured here, is individually listed as a national historic landmark. This map also includes the area in red labeled FY22, National Defense Authorization Act, Course of Action Study. The recently passed National Defense Authorization Act, or NDAA, contains Section 2104 that states demolition of District of Columbia, Fort McNair, Quarters 4, 13, and 15. This section will require the Army, Secretary of the Army, to demolish certain quarters at Fort McNair within one year of current occupants' departure. The NDAA was drafted beginning in May 2022, after completion of this ADP, then approved by Congress and signed by the President in December. The demolition of these quarters was not included in the ADP. The Commission finds that the removal of these historic homes will adversely affect the integrity and character of the historic district. However, the Commission does not have review authority over demolitions, and even if it did, the Commission's authority would not override the mandatory provision contained in the National Defense Authorization Act, which has been approved by Congress, signed by the President, and enacted into law. Similar to Meyer Henderson Hall, Fort McNair's development plan is primarily renovation of existing buildings with a total of 455,970 square feet. Only 125,321 square feet will be new construction. The plan also includes 1,508 linear feet of perimeter fencing. Much of this new construction is split between a proposed mixed-use complex with amphitheater and parking garage, and a combined Military District of Washington Headquarters building, both circled on the plan. Overall, the Commission supports the proposed renovation products, projects throughout the campus, specifically the renovation of officers' quarters, modernizing training facilities, including the National Defense University, and modernized entry control gates, and a new mixed-use facility with parking garage for events. The Commission also recommends the Army submit the draft ADP to the US Commission of Fine Arts for review. The draft ADP for Fort McNair also includes a project labeled Z, noted here in blue on the illustrious master plan, that calls for the construction of the new Military District of Washington Headquarters. This will entail demolition of Buildings 41 and 45, pictured here, and renovation of Buildings 39 and 47, which will be combined with a new addition. Buildings 41 and 45 are within the Fort McNair Historic District and listed as historic structures. The draft ADP does not elaborate on the demolition of these buildings, or describe the process of justification for their removal. The District State Historic Preservation Office has submitted comments related to this project that will need to be addressed in the updated ADP. It is also important to note that Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act is applicable to the entirety of the ADP, and that the Army stated they intend to formally initiate Section 106 with the identified consulting parties to consider the impact of the ADP to historic resources. The Commission also noted that the demolition of buildings within the historic district raises larger questions about the future of the base, in particular, the fate of the remaining historic homes, the impact of sea level rise on the already vulnerable floodplain, and the compatibility of infill development if new development is warranted. As such, the Commission requests the Army respond to these broader issues in the draft submission and evaluate the following in the courses of action: How existing and new construction in this area, which is located in the 100 and 500-year floodplain, will meet Executive Order 13690 pertaining to federal flood risk management; how the design and scale of new development will be compatible with the historic district if reconstruction is pursued. This concludes my presentation. I have incorporated recommendations throughout the presentation, so I will not read them, but I have included them here for your reference. Overall, the Commission supports the goals and objectives of the Area Development Plan. There are several areas of concern that are noted in the recommendations that will need to be addressed before the next submission. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have, and I'm going to turn it over to US Army Joint Base Garrison Commander, Colonel David Bowling, to say a few words and introduce his team.
Colonel Bowling?
Hi. I just want to make sure everybody can hear us. We have some technical challenges.
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much. So, as the lady mentioned, my name is Colonel Dave Bowen. I'm the commander for Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall, and I'm joined by a whole cast of teammates here today. We have our Director of Public Works, as long as our Director of Cultural Resources and Nevo Program Management. We're also very fortunate to be joined by some colleagues from the Headquarters Department of the Army as well. And so, just in terms of opening comments, the only thing I would offer is, first, thank you to the Commission for inclusion into this discussion. You know, we acknowledge the Commission's got a very difficult and challenging job here trying to plan across the National Capital Region. We're just grateful. We had a wonderful visit last summer with a whole host of folks over here. And frankly, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank Mr. Paul McMahon, who frankly has been very instrumental in ensuring that we are communicating effectively and timely what it is we're trying to do with the Commission as we move forward. We don't have any additional comments. We are certainly standing by to help provide any additional clarity on joint base specific topics, or, as I mentioned before, we do have some teammates out of HQ that are on the line as well. So, we will pause and turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Herr, and thank you, Colonel Bowling, and we'll make sure that we do take advantage of the team you have assembled there if commissioners have any questions. Do commissioners have questions?
I have a question, yes.
Yes, your Commissioner Dixon?
Going back to Henderson Hall, I want to know how close is the area we're working with to the Air Force Memorial area? I wasn't able to figure that out from the images. How close is it to that?
Hey, Commissioner Dixon, that's a great question. So, there's a very clear delineation between the Air Force Memorial and the Joint Base Fencing. Now, you may be aware that Arlington National Cemetery currently has an expansion project underway, upon completion of which the Air Force Memorial is basically going to be in the middle of that expansion area, but the boundaries between Arlington National Cemetery and the Joint Base remain unchanged.
Okay. So, it does, this particular area we're talking about, does abut the Air Force Memorial space as expanded?
And if you're referring to the Arlington National Cemetery expansion, yes.
Yes, okay. Yes.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and we can maybe provide the Commission with some additional details from Arlington National Cemetery, just so you have better awareness of the project. just so you have better awareness of, of the project and stuff. But yeah, at N-State, the cemetery is going to expand, and it will in fact include the Air Force Memorial, uh, is, is sort of in the center of that expansion.
Yeah, I understand that part. I'm really trying to get a sense of how close the work you're going to be doing is to that uh, expansion area in terms of its borders.
Yeah, so we don't have the current or, or planned projects that's going to impede or impact, uh, the Air Force Memorial, uh, as of right now.
Okay, I have a reason for my, my question, but I may want to go, uh, uh, sidebar and talk about this at some other point with the staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Um, Commissioner?
I have a question, but I, I don't think it's for the, it's for the, it's more for, um, staff. I, I, I'm, I'm scratching my head on this one. I think the, the, the demolition of the three buildings has taken up a lot of the oxygen in the room. But I'm more, I don't understand why we're looking at this without initiation of one oh six consultation and without a TMP. I mean, I, I mean, we're often in the same position where we can't afford to do a TMP, but I don't recall an instance of being told, "Well, come on in and you can pay for it next year." I don't get that.
Well, actually, that's one of the reasons that it's on the agenda as a concept review. Um, we recognized early on that, uh, they didn't have everything for the draft level review, the big thing being that the TMP, um, and the Section one oh six. But we still knew that it was worth providing comments because, because of the funding issue. It's going to take them a while to develop the TMP, and so we wanted to also give them the time to address the significant number of comments that we, along with other, uh, partners, had on the ADP.
So, uh, and I'll just add, so we did, we dropped it down to concept review. Uh, we used this opportunity to let the Army know of everything that we see as a problem. Um, but the other thing, uh, we should note is that they would like to move forward with the new barracks at Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall, um, and that project will be coming in, in the near future. Uh, so we do n- need to get some consensus from the Commission as to whether they are, you are okay with that, whether they have followed the program comment, because this was not in their previous master plan. So, that was the other reason we decided to move it forward as a concept.
So, another, so a project is going to come in for what, concept approval or concept review? It, without?
As a, as a building, as a building. So, the build, the barracks building projects, um, I remember the courses of action that Jamie went through, the five different courses. Yes, so, the course five, course of action, where they would like to build two new buildings for housing, that, the, that specific project is going to come in this spring, um, and that was not-
Of an approved plan?
Yes, yes, which we have done-
I guess I, I guess I just don't, I don't understand that.
Little Bass Hackers?
We have done that before, where an update to a master plan is moving along with, you know, the, a project, uh, coming in as well. Um, you know, the master plan is really asking, "Are you okay with the location of this new project?" And then it is going to come, and so I guess that's the question we were trying to get some, some feedback on today for the Virginia campus side of this.
Okay.
Chair Goodman, you're on mute right now?
I apologize. Thank you, Commissioner Wright, and I just was asking if there are any other questions from the Commission before we move on to two of our speakers today. Yes, Commissioner Green?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair Goodman. Uh, Colonel Bowling, uh, I have a question for you. Thank you very much for, uh, joining us today. And I have a question about Fort McNair and Buildings three fourteen, uh, four thirteen and fifteen. Um, as was noted in the presentation, this wasn't in the two thousand, the demolition was not in the two thousand and fourteen master plan or in the current ADP. Could you speak to how this, um, very particular provision found its way into the NDAA?
Commissioner Green, thank you so much for the question. Uh, you know, I, I have a vague idea of sort of the events surroundings and some of the details, but I'll be honest with you, I think our teammates at the Pentagon are better postured to provide comment, and I will defer to them.
Uh, I, I think, this is Carla Coulson, I think I can answer that question, if, uh, if you'd like.
Carla, could you identify your position, please?
Yes, I'm the Deputy Assistant Secretary, uh, of the Army for Installations, Housing, and Partnerships, and, um, work for the Assistant Secretary for Installations, uh, Energy and Environment here in the, in the Pentagon.
Thank you.
So, so I think I can explain, uh, you know, what happened, uh, and I'll try to be, I'll try to be brief. Uh, we have, uh, the Hill, uh, members of Congress, our Congressional Oversight Committees, and in this case, it was the House Armed Services Committee has, um, a complete oversight over all general officer quarters that we, uh, that we have in our inventory, that we might renovate or build new, whether they're privatized or owned, and this happens to be part of the Army-owned inventory, uh, of which we don't have much in the United States, uh, some overseas, but mostly everything in the U.S. is privatized. But this is an owned inventory, and of course, these quarters are historic, they're old, and they're in need of renovation. So, when we have a renovation project, uh, they are authorized and appropriated by our Congressional Oversight Committees, uh, the House and the Senate Armed Services Committee authorize those projects. So, we went forward, um, in fiscal year twenty-three with three projects for those three sets of quarters, uh, whatever the numbers are, four thirteen and fifteen, or whatever the numbers are. They were projects to address primarily life, health, safety, not to go and completely remodel or the interiors, or to move walls, or to renovate kitchens, or bathrooms, or any of that. They were primarily, uh, just, you know, to address things like roofs, foundations, systems, electrical systems, plumbing. Uh, but the cost was extraordinary, and, uh, I'm going to say that they were in excess of three million dollars for a house to address life, health, safety, what we refer to as life, health, safety issue. Uh, so when, when, when they go forward, we, we would anticipate that we would have a lot of questions from the Hill because of the amount of, uh, amount of money it would take us to do the renovations, and so we did not receive authorization or appropriation of those funds at our request. What we received instead was the direction to demolish the houses. So, the message is loud and clear from us, or from the Hill to us, and that is, we need to find uh, a way to better manage our historic properties. But I do not believe that they will, uh, uh, under any circumstance, uh, whether that is just for life, health, safety, or, you know, take care of the systems in the house, or if we look at a full renovation, we did go to the Corps of Engineers and, and that, that, uh, if we do a full renovation of these units, five to six million dollars a house. They will not, uh, agree to do that. Uh, so we've done, we've undertaken a significant study, um, that I think is nearing conclusion to look at, uh, cost-benefit analysis and what some answers might be to manage the historic housing at both Fort Meyer McNair. I think we received the initial, uh, the first version of that study just yesterday, so we haven't had the time to look at it yet. But hopefully, it is, um, uh, the Corps of Engineers did, did the study, uh, uh, and I think in, in consultation with, um, uh, you know, with, with many others to include those that have, uh, a lot of interest in historic properties and historic housing. But we're looking to take that to, uh, you know, help guide some of our thinking and decision-making as we continue to dialogue with uh, members of Congress and our Congressional Oversight Committees to try to figure out what an appropriate way forward is with housing here in the NCR. So, that's what happened, uh, and, uh, we certainly are not going to demolish these houses without any consultation, uh, that's required. If you, if you read the law, it says tear, it says demolish the units, it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, say that, uh, they waived any, any consultation. So, it's nothing that, that we're going to go in there with bulldozers and tear them down. That's not going to happen. Uh, so, so we haven't taken any action yet. We haven't even looked at how we would fund the demolition of these houses. So, uh, uh, but, but that, I think, hopefully helps to explain to you a little bit with respect to uh, the reason you're seeing this in, in public law. Over.
Thank you for your, um, uh, information shared. Are there other questions from the Commission? Any more questions from the Commissioners?
If I could, I just wanted to follow up on that. To be crystal clear, basically, you asked for money to do improvements to those buildings, and instead, uh, the Congress directed you to-
That's correct. But, the, 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 uh, projects were in, were in our request, the Department of Defense request for, uh, the renovation of those three units.
Okay. Has that ever happened before?
It has not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Are there other questions from Commissioners?
Yes, I have a question. Um, when, in the, in the conversations about the, the proposed demolition, was there any, that, was there any discussion of precedent setting? Because the, this is completely antithetical to the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six. I, 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 I can't, I, 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 I can't imagine a conversation like this taking place without challenging um, if for no other reason, this, the, the really sad and potentially invasive precedent that this sets. Um, and, and my second question is, was there any, or has there been any attempt, if, if all else fails, to, to, to try and raise private money to save these buildings? Because while I understand the price tag for, for a housing unit is, is, um, is a, is a tough, um, thing to swallow, it's not just a house, it's part of a larger composition that is, um, visible from everywhere, and, and I, I just, it, it's, it's, it's sort of shocking. So, those are two questions. One, was there conversation about precedent setting? And two, was there conversation about, um, um, trying to raise private money?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself, and, and also here on the line, we have, uh, Ms. Amy Borman, uh, who might want to, uh, to jump in. She actually, um, is our, uh, um, our Deputy Assistant Secretary for Environment Safety and Occupational Health, and has been working, uh, on, uh, our historic housing, uh, for, for many months now. But I will say, no, there was not any discussion about precedent, and we have not done anything. We have undertaken a study, also directed by Congress, uh, dur-, uh, undertaken a study to try to assist us in better managing our historic, uh, housing. And, and in that study, I'm sure there's going to be some discussion about, uh, you know, being able to, or what we might be able to do from a, from a private or a public, uh, perspective. Of course, you know, we have, and I'll just use the large set of, of, uh, uh, general officer quarters out, uh, at Rock Island Arsenal, the largest in the Army inventory. That was, uh, quarters one, uh, out there for many, many years. We have tried for many years to, to find private funding, uh, as well as public funding to maintain that property and, and have been unsuccessful. So, so we have not, the Army has not had, uh, a lot of success in doing that, but that, of course, does not mean that we wouldn't in this instance. Uh, so, so we are looking forward to the results of the study that we have, taking a look at it, and then having a dialogue, uh, amongst ourselves internally, of course, and then with our Congressional Oversight Committees regarding how to best manage this property. Uh, and we're at the very beginning of that, uh, nascent stages of, of doing that.
And, and so, so, and so the second question, or the first question was about, to your knowledge, has there been a conversation about the precedent that, that demolishing these buildings would set?
Not with our Congressional Oversight Committee, uh, Committees, no ma'am. At least I haven't, uh, had any, uh, discussions of that nature with them.
Well, at the very least, may, I, I hope that, that we're, our comments will include a suggestion that that conversation take place.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Are there any additional questions? Any additional questions? Hearing none. Uh, thank you for the questions, and we're going to move on. We have two people who are signed up to speak. Our first speaker is Rebecca Miller, uh, with the D.C. Preservation League. Ms. Miller, are you representing, uh, the organization, you are representing an organization, and so you have five minutes to speak?
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair Goodman. Welcome to the NCPC. Uh, for those of you who have not met me before, it's been a while since DCL has been before the Commission. My name's Rebecca Miller. I'm the Executive Director of the D.C. Preservation League. Um, I thank you for the opportunity to comment, uh, on our concerns with the proposed, uh, master plan that's in front of you. Uh, for those of you who are not familiar with us, uh, DCL was founded in nineteen seventy-one to save the old post office on Pennsylvania Avenue. And for more than fifty years, we've served as C, as DC's citywide nonprofit advocate for the preservation, protection, enhancement of the historically and culturally significant places of our nation's capital. Uh, given the organization's citywide focus, I'll reserve my comments to the portion of the master plan that affects Fort McNair. Um, as you've heard already, it's the third oldest Army installation in the United States and the oldest in the District of Columbia. It holds national significance in the areas of architecture, military history, military education, and health and medicine. In addition to its original use for the city's defense, it has served as a penitentiary, barracks, hospital, and college throughout various periods of, of the nation's history. The fort's historic significance led to the Joint Committee on Landmarks, which is, was established by the National Capitol Planning Commission to include it in its first edition of the D.C. Inventory of Historic Sites in nineteen sixty-four. The site later became a national historic landmark. The historical importance of Fort McNair to the city and the country is indisputable, and the protection of its heritage assets should be of the utmost importance to this body and to the Army. DCL recognizes that prior master planning documents did not call for the demolition of Quarters four, thirteen, and fifteen, and we're surprised that the buildings were included in the most recent submission. We also recognize that the demolitions are not required, are now required due to the language inserted by an unknown legislator in the National Defense Authorization Act. We echo the National Trust and their request that further investigation occurs as to who inserted this last-minute language and why they feel it's necessary. Designed by McKinley White, at the request of President Theodore Roosevelt, the sixteen quarters that line the Washington Channel, the Army War College, and other buildings built during the campus's most extensive building campaign tell a story of the Bozards' movement and symmetry of design. This was an intentionally designed site, not one that is ad hoc. The demolition of Quarters four, thirteen, and fifteen would adversely affect the integrity of the historic district. Not only are these proposed demolishes non-contiguous, they're leaving gaps between an intact ensemble of buildings, but there are no plans to replace these structures. In addition, no study that DCL is aware of has been undertaken by the Army to address the effect of sea level rise at, at Fort McNair. These proposed demolition sites may very well be undevelopable in the future due to concerns about flooding and from what we've heard, funding. DCL joins the National Trust in urging the Army to initiate Section one oh six consultation for this plan. Given the historic nature of this property, many parties across the city would be interested in these proposed plans. In addition, we are confident that many are unaware of the planning and/or demolitions at Fort McNair, given its inclusion with the Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall master plan. The above concerns have led the D.C. Preservation League to add Fort McNair to its list of most endangered places in Washington. Since nineteen ninety-six, this list has drawn significant public attention to buildings and sites that are subject to neglect, ill-advised alteration, and in this case, demolition. D, DCL requests that the Commission encourage the Army to initiate Section one oh six and work with consulting parties to identify alternatives to the proposed demolitions on this undeniably historic campus. I thank you for considering the views of the D.C. Preservation League, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and do, does the Commission have any questions at this time for Ms. Miller? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to move on to the second speaker, and that is Elizabeth Merritt with the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Ms. Merritt, uh, you are going to have five minutes to speak as well, and welcome to the Commission.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm Elizabeth Merritt, Deputy General Counsel at the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and we thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns about the proposed Concept Area Development Plan for Joint Base- concept area development plan for Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall in Virginia and Fort McNair in Washington, D C. While much of the proposed conceptual plan is appropriate, unfortunately, it proposes to demolish multiple contributing buildings within the Fort McNair Historic District, and some of these proposed demolitions are inexplicable. We understand that the Commission's review authority does not extend to approving demolition. However, your opportunity to review and comment on a conceptual master plan that calls for demolition should include their consideration in that context. Of course, the most troubling proposed demolitions are those of quarters four, thirteen, and fifteen, all of which are contributing resources to the Fort McNair Historic District and highly significant. As we learned this morning, the reason for the inexplicable last minute inclusion of their demolition in the National Defense Authorization Act was apparently had to do with high cost estimates for repairs. And we hope to use the Section one oh six process to address alternatives to this approach, and we intend to follow up with congressional staff as well and with the Army, including a request that the Army complete the report requested by Congress almost a year ago that would that would address this issue. I also want to mention that we we note that there are multiple demolitions proposed under the area development plan that utilize the program comment for the Army interwar historic housing that was adopted by the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation in twenty twenty. And I want to provide just a little context. We don't dispute that the Army comply has complied with this program comment. I don't want to provide a little context. This program comment passed the Advisory Council by just one vote, and it was strongly opposed by the National Trust and the National Conference of State Historic Preservation Officers, in large part because of the inclusion of demolition within its scope. The Army at the time assured the members of the Advisory Council that it would rarely be invoked for demolition since its primary purpose was supposed to be to address repetitive maintenance actions. Instead, the Army now characterizes the program comment as being essentially for the purpose of facilitating demolition. We would like to urge the Army to initiate Section one oh six consultation for this master plan. In our view, it should have already been initiated, but it will involve the input of two different state historic preservation offices and interested parties like the National Trust and D C Preservation League. And this could lead to the identification of alternatives and modifications to the master plan that could help to avoid and minimize its adverse effects. And those alternatives and modifications should be incorporated. Finally, we we agree with the Commission that the Army needs to address more broadly the threat of sea level rise at Fort McNair in its master plan. The Army should develop a plan to protect Fort McNair's historic properties in a way that is consistent with the Army's stewardship responsibilities under the National Historic Preservation Act. The National Park Service has been engaged in thoughtful work to address this issue nearby at the Title Basin and Haynes Point, and we suggest that the Commission could encourage the Army to begin to address this issue more comprehensively. In light of these deficiencies, we hope the Commission will encourage the Army to go back and take a step back and develop a new conceptual plan that takes these issues into account. We thank you again for the opportunity to voice our concerns and for considering the comments of the National Trust for Historic Preservation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Merritt. Does the Commission have any questions at this time for Ms. Merritt? Any questions? Hearing none. That concludes the public testimony on this proposal. And now I'm going to open it up for Commission discussion, Commission discussion. Can everyone please turn on your cameras, and I'm going to start with Commissioner McMahon. Please keep your webcams on during the conversation. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair Goodman. Appreciate it. This is a multifaceted plan, you know, across the two installations. So two pieces of the conversation. I think in my discussions ahead of today's meeting with the Army, I think the legislative language in the F Y twenty three N D A certainly has caught everybody by surprise. And it sounds like the Army with Ms. Colson's support will will sort through all that as they determine what actions they'll be taking and how they work with their committees on in the F Y twenty four program on on that piece, certainly the comments and and concerns as they continue to develop the A D P, most especially on the T M P. I think are valid and need to be need to be resolved. T M P is a key part of the A D P process and needs to be done before the A D P comes back to us for a wholesale revision. I think that's obviously sea level rise plays now, too. In terms of Fort Meyer, I think that seems fairly well thought out. I think the Commission has raised, staff has raised a lot of good questions and comments for the Army to consider, and I thank them for their efforts. I think besides that, at this point, I have no additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Thank you very much. And now Commissioner May, please.
So I I think I at another time will need to understand better why N C P C does not have authority over demolitions. Because that's like the first time I've heard that stated so specifically. And I imagine it's embedded somewhere in our rules. But I don't know that, you know, after fifteen years, I might have heard that before. But it's, I don't know, maybe it's the first time it came up. Again, that's a sidebar, like the staff and some other times. It's a little I do understand why, you know, the Congress, he said, tear the buildings down. They're technically to be torn down, although I think there are, you know, there are some hurdles to that. Certainly, one oh six consultation makes sense. I'm from one of my staff that I'm breaking up. Can you hear me okay? Oh, okay. So, yeah. Okay. Is this any better? Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. Not sure what was going on there. All right. I don't need to repeat all that. The will note that I did go on the tour. I'll back at Fort Meyer Henderson Hall.
Commissioner, you are still breaking up on and off.
Try turning your camera off.
Indeed. All right, I'll try again.
Thank you.
Now I'm just a voice, a disembodied voice. Anyway, so Fort Meyer Henderson Hall, I did go on that tour. That was interesting and enlightening because I saw parts of that base that I'd never seen before on that tour. It was it's clear that there are portions of or buildings on the site that need a lot of attention. And so I think it's very good that this action is being taken to develop the A D P and to look at things comprehensively. I will also say that much of the more recent architecture, and I can't remember whether it's, you know, where it is compared to the N H L boundary and things like that, much of the recent architecture, when I say recent, like within the last probably thirty years, is not very good. And it's just sort of, you know, historicist, you know, imitation of general building forms without the kind of detail and attention that makes it into a decent building. And so, I mean, there are a lot of buildings there that I would want to tear down just because they're ugly. That's I fear that we're heading in that direction now with the proposed new buildings. So putting aside, you know, I agree with with much of what's been said about Section one oh six consultation. And I'll return to that, but just putting that aside, I just have a general concern about the design of the building that may be coming to us in a few months. It is and and again, what we what we saw today was not encouraging from a design perspective. So I think we need to understand that a lot better and take a good hard look at whether this is in fact going to be a positive addition to that to that base. If it doesn't have the kind of detailing and depth and sort of understanding of the forms that is necessary to make it into a, you know, make it into good buildings. I mean, it just it's, as I said, I have concerns about that. Section one oh six consultation, I agree, should be started as soon as possible. It should have started already. Not only that, the N H L consultation that is necessary at both locations because we have an N H L on both sites. It's it it hasn't happened. I consulted with the National Park Service's N H L coordinator, who is supposed to be involved in any projects that involve N H Ls. And she was not aware of this area development plan happening now. And so and she cited some very specific concerns with some of the building projects that are proposed, particularly at Fort McNair, where some of the building projects that are within or very close to the N H L area, the N H L district at that site have not been are well, are potentially damaging to the N H L. So I I that does need serious attention, and I would recommend that that begin right away. And I think even, you know, when it comes to the 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 proposed building that's coming in the in the in the next few months, I would like our N H L office to be involved in the discussions about what's happening. So that, you know, everything is being done appropriately, and you're hearing the right voices. So I think that's it for what I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. And Commissioner Argo? Commissioner Argo, you're on mute.
Well, that would be why you couldn't hear me.
Okay.
Sorry. I, you know, I'm 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 I feel kind of fumbling around here and I don't, you know, and I I'm I'm I was gonna just align myself with Commissioner May's comments, which I'll still do anyway. But I guess, and I'm I'm gonna ask what is probably considered, you know, a really gnarly question. Is, you know, is the action requested of us today considered by considered, is anybody thinking that it's preliminary at this point? But I I'm just, I'm leaving that as an open question. Are we with approval of this, are we boxing ourselves in in any way with regard to some of the questions that we've raised?
About this Sullivan?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You are not approving anything. You're just providing comments.
Okay.
A concept. It's as low as it can go.
Yeah, okay.
Lowest level.
I I just want to be really clear.
And I'm being crystal clear also, yes, no approval.
Yeah, and and so and so aligning, and that's fine. It appears as though there are significant comments coming from the Commissioners as well as the staff that that I would align myself with as well. And would like to, as a separate thing here more, and I'm trying to figure out, making sure we work something into the comments as Commissioner May suggested about the Section one oh six alternative. And I guess, because this is interesting. I haven't heard anything like this since I've been on the Commission. Also, where we have this congressional action that that precedes our review and puts us in, I would, in in my view, in a little, in a more, in a different position and kind of a difficult position. I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Hewlett?
Yeah, I would like to echo the sentiments of Commissioners May and and Argo. You know, this is this is a tough situation where you have these acts and laws that conflict or this particular case conflict with each other. But do they have to? Really truly have to? So I I really empathize and support the statements of Ms. Merritt and Ms. Miller on behalf of the D C Preservation League and the National Trust. They raise very good points. And just because you can doesn't mean you have to. So and and I and it looks like our own General Counsel, Skylar, and Skylar was attempting to address, I guess, is the question raised by Commissioner May regarding the Commission's lack of authority regarding demolitions. So I, you know, I'd like to hear from her as well on that issue if it because it's probably germane to the comments that we're hearing. So that's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewlett. Commissioner Green?
Thank you. I, you know, Buildings four, thirteen, and fifteen are, you know, significant contributing buildings to the Fort McNair Historic District. I mean, these buildings are, you know, designed by McKinney White. They're essential, character-defining features of Fort McNair. The integrity of the Potomac Facing Row requires the continued presence of each and every one of these buildings. I mean, their loss would be irreplaceable, and every individual loss would irrevocably degrade the integrity of the whole. Though the two thousand master plan does not call for the removal, the proposed master plan changed the terms unexpectedly without within but with no explanation within the master plan presenting the reasons for this demolition. And the master plan also provides no guidance for what's to occur on these three sites should this ill-advised demolition occur. And I acknowledge Council's argument that N C P C does not have jurisdiction over demolition, though that warrants further discussion. However, I suggest this is not a demolition request. This is a master plan that calls for the demolition of Buildings four, thirteen, and fifteen. We've been asked to comment on the master plan, and in that spirit, I believe it's appropriate to ask for efforts to seek the removal of the section calling for the demolition of Buildings four, thirteen, and fifteen through appropriate channels and to work with the Department of the Army's planning staff, National Trust, and the D C Preservation League and any other interested parties to 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 see if it might be possible to remove those that section from the N D A A. And that would certainly support the goal of retaining historic character, which is set out in the A D P, which frames our review. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green, Commissioner Wright?
Well, I'm just gonna pile on. I I I I hear the trust loud and clear, yes. Apparently, we don't have authority over demolitions, but we do have we we have authority to comment stealthily on on the on the plan in total. And and as as somebody who works every day in this world, I cannot emphasize enough that this, that letting this pass undermines the efficacy of the entire preservation movement in the federal government. And that is not a hysterical statement. It's a statement of fact. Because the reason in part that the the N H P A was created in the first place was because, obviously, preservation, many times, yes, it can save us money, but there are instances, and and I and I totally understand when I ask the question. Yes, when you look at it as a as a price tag for a home, a single-family home, wow. But it's it's more than that, as Commissioner Green just stated. It's part of this entire composition. And what we're what we're looking at, it's like punching somebody's teeth out and then having no plan for 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 a a root canal and a new cap. I mean, it that 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 there's no plan, there's no, the plan doesn't speak to replacement. So if demolition occurs, then we just have these empty lots at at four, thirteen, and fifteen. I'm and and I'd just like to say again, this is this is not unusual. We And, and I'd just like to say again, this is, this is not unusual, we see this, for example, at NICMAC, on the Memorial Advisory Commission. We get contradictory direction many times, for example, you know, with the location of Congress makes a law that says a monument or a building, which we've recently seen, needs to go inside Area 1 or in the reserve, where we've, where, where the Commemorative Works Act specifically says that's not to be the case. So we, it's not unprecedented where we see contradictory legislation. And I, and I hope that we can get a league of, of lawyers involved here, because I, 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 I'm if this is a breathtaking precedent that we, that would be set here. We would in effect be saying to every federal agency, well, if you don't have it in your budget, I mean, and we're already doing it here, oh, you don't have the money for a TMP, well, we'll wait. Well, since when? I, I, and this, that's what I alluded to earlier, where we have these, these shared understandings of how this process works and, and suddenly we're going off the rails today. And I don't really understand why, and I think that there's there's every reason here for, for for all of us to sound an alarm, because the, the, the implications of letting this pass are, are quite significant.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Wright, I appreciate that. And Ms. Geiler, I see your hand up, and I'm going to wait and let Commissioners Dixon, Cash, Davis and Cozart contribute before I, I call on you to give us the information that I know you're going to share. So Commissioner Dixon, do you have a comment?
I have actually two texts I would take. First one may be a little light. I would have fought hard historically for the golf course to stay on this property, but they took it away from this space. I would also say that I apologize that I may have been part of some demolition earlier, some of my stray shots against somebody's building. But that was many years ago. Moving to maybe a more serious attack, I, I, I faced, we all faced, certainly we faced this problem in our own communities. Where we have historical buildings that residents and others can't afford the price of repairing them. And oftentimes, the result is they just fall apart and then there's nothing that can be done about it. But have the resources to do this is important. And support that idea that we, we need to maintain these buildings if we can. So I'm waiting to see where we go with this. But I definitely think it's important. And I also would like to ask that we be hesitant on the, we've been using a lot of acronyms and the public is watching this. I hope they can, they know I, I found my way through it, but it's helpful to use. Maybe we think about that a little bit. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon, and I would agree with you, as a newcomer, I, I would remind everyone, if you have an opportunity to actually use, you know, the name of these organizations, it would be helpful for the public and, and also for new learners. So thank you, again, Commissioner Dixon, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate the presentation and then the comments of the other commissioners, I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Davis, and Commissioner Cozart?
Yes, thank you, I'm gonna focus my comments on Fort McNair due to its location in the district. The Buzzard Point neighborhood where Fort McNair is located has been identified as an area for resilience-forward redevelopment. It's highlighted in the comprehensive plan for the district and the Buzzard Point Vision Framework and Design Review Guide. Fort McNair can be a model for resilience, use and preservation of historic assets and coordination with the local community, all while meeting the Army's needs to improve the facility's function and maintain security. As documented in the NCPC staff report, the draft concept area development plan has yet to live up to that vision. This missed opportunity would best be remedied by engaging in required section 106 consultation as well as coordination with district government agencies who've weighed in with a number of issues related to flood mitigation, resilience, historic preservation and urban design. And so we ask that the Army meaningfully engage the district government and other affected stakeholders so that the plan can be a success. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cozart, I appreciate those remarks as well, and I'm gonna call on, before I make my remarks, I'd like to call on Ms. Skylar, who has some information for the commission.
Thank you. I don't know if my video's on, thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry to
I'm sorry to sort of barge into your meeting, but there are a couple of issues I would hopefully address to help you with your, the commission with its decision-making. Commissioner May raised the issue of NCPC's lack of authority over demolition. It's very interesting that this only came up for the first time with, when the Smithsonian Institution proposed the demolition of the Bezos Center, which was a small annex to the Air and Space Museum. And at the time, former Chair White asked about what was the basis for our not having the authority. And interestingly enough, it was a question of first impression, I do have historical general counsel, NCPC general counsel prior legal opinions. And I found nothing, nothing on it. So I, I analyzed and reviewed the National Capital Planning Act, which is our organic legislation. And the result of which was as follows, one, our authority is predicated on what, if you look at all the language, what comes after demolition, we kind of regulate the development. So we don't go pre-development, I found no language to support our doing that, both direct or indirect or implied. Second, demolition is really a regulatory function, typically in a, in a local setting, demolition requires a permit from a local authority. We have planning and zoning authority, but we do not have regulatory authority. So based on this analysis, I concluded that we lack the authority over demolition. And I'm certainly happy after this meeting to have the legal opinion that I drafted shared with all the commissioners, I'll ask Secretary Costa to disseminate it amongst them. Second, I want to address the issue raised by Commissioner Green that because the demolition is embedded in a plan, we can in fact address it. We can talk about it, yes, we can direct our displeasure towards it, yes, but we cannot, notwithstanding its inclusion in the plan, still take any direct action on that particular, on demolition, as, 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 we can't take, we cannot take action on demolition. The third issue I'd like to raise is one that you've been talking about, which is asking the Army to, to raise the precedence of the demolition of the structures with their appropriators. And I do believe that that is not an appropriate direction that the commission should take. I certainly don't think any of our federal members would appreciate other agencies or would appreciate hearing that they should go to their appropriators and, and pursue a particular approach. But having said that, I think we have drafted some language, if you feel strongly and want a recommendation in the EDR that kinds of kind of puts the Army in that direction without overtly saying you must go to your appropriators and Diane Sullivan, I think, would be willing to share that if a motion is made to change the EDR. So having said that, I'm, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
I want to recognize Commissioner Wright for a comment.
I, I have a question, Anne. So if the plan, if, if, so, so the, one of the things to me that's quite notable about the plan is that there is nothing, it's silent on, on well, it's not actually silent, it, it commits to the fact that there's no plan for following demolition to build on those sites. If, so, so would the commission have the right to comment? Because there have been cases, GSA has been involved with them, to my knowledge, where demolitions have occurred to make room for another building. In, in fact, the purpose of, the, the purpose of the demolition was directly tied to some need or desire for a different building type or what have you in this, on the same site. So the question is, does the lack, i- is it the lack of, of an intended reuse of the site? That which precludes the commission from having the authority to review it and/or approve? You see what I'm saying?
I do understand, and I think the, the, the point to be made is the commission does have authority to regulate the subsequent development at the time that it is proposed. Here, it's not proposed, if they were proposing demolition, and in the next breath saying, and we're going to do X, Y and Z, the commission could comment on X, Y and Z, but not go to the issue whether the demolition to allow X, Y and Z was appropriate.
So it is the absence of a, of a published intent to replace these buildings that precludes us from authority over it?
I think, well, I want to be careful here, because even if there is a proposed onward plan, we still can't, you can comment on that, but we still can't comment on the demolition. So in a way, yes, it is the absence, but demolition is off limits, because it's not within the authority of the commission. Subsequent development on the cleared demolition, on a cleared site where the demolition occurred is within the commission's authority.
Okay. Are you finished? Yeah, I got it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright and Ms. Skylar, and now Commissioner May has a comment.
Yeah, I, I have to say, I'm truly baffled by this opinion. I am not a lawyer and I haven't looked at any of the documentation, but my attitude toward this is that putting up a building and removing a building are very similar actions. They are both forms of development. Right? If you take a building away, that is a form of development. So I will be very interested in reading the opinion that you've written and running it by my colleagues and my attorneys, because we have a stake in this as well. The department is a, as a, as a representative on the commission has, you know, we have a lot of stake in what goes on with the commission, and I really do think that the, the, the notion that demolition is not covered under NCPC's authority, I think is, is, just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I think, I'm sorry. I, I think it's interesting that in doing the research, we couldn't find any prior reviews of demolition. So that in and of itself said something very strongly to me. But I definitely will share the opinion, and you're welcome to share it with your attorney, and I'd be very happy to talk to your attorneys with, about it.
But demolition divorced from new development is unusual in and of itself, in a, in a, in, in the kinds of, of, of locations that we review. I can't
I'm sorry, thank you. I believe I was gonna say, I believe in the case of the Bezos Center, we knew generally what was coming, but we did not have specific plans upon which we could comment. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's enough to have just an idea that it's going to be redeveloped.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, the mere removal of a building is, is a development of the site in, in, in my view, and I, you know, maybe it hasn't come up before, because we are, you know, we've always done things very systematically, and you get the, the master plan, and you see, well, when this building goes away, then we're gonna put this up. Effectively, what you're saying is that I could take a historic building on my, on, on National Park Service property and demolish it, and NCPC would have no role. We would still have to do NEPA compliance and, and section 106, but the, the National Capital Planning Commission would not have a role. That just does not make any sense to me. So that's why I'm really interested in seeing the opinion.
Okay, yeah, I don't think we should belabor this, so I'll get that out as soon as possible.
And it's moot here. It's moot in the case of these buildings.
But I do, I do want to thank Commissioner May and Commissioner Wright for their input, and especially thank you to Ms. Skylar for participating and offering to share this information going forward. I do see Ms. Her has had her hand up for some time, and I wanted to recognize her.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify, based on the comments, that the ADP, which was completed in spring of 2021, does not include the demolition of Buildings 4, 13 and 15. We included it as part of our review, because we were aware of the NDAA when it was, before it was signed, and then when it was signed and made official. The ADP does not include the demolition of these buildings. The ADP lists the all 15 buildings as a renovation project. And so there's no plan in the ADP to replace them or demolish them. The NDAA calls for their demolish, the demolishment of the buildings, which is separate from the ADP, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Her very much, and I would like to thank you for your presentation today and, and just make my comment, I, I agree that these facilities and the campus contribute mightily to the cultural landscape of Washington DC, and these are cultural assets that are, I think, merit preservation and conservation. They're very significant assets, not just to the DC and the district area, but also to the rest of the country and to our history. So I, I just want to underscore that there is a significant amount of work that is yet to be done on, on, on this project and on this presentation for future meetings. And I also am just really baffled at, at the fact that this is all in a floodplain, really, I mean, this is in a very precarious location when it, as it relates to water and, and the future. Just based on last month's presentation on the Potomac seawalls and the efforts that are being taken to, to protect that area from infiltration, but also inundation. It seems to me that there needs to be more work done, especially on, on the, on the, on the impact of of water to this area and the impact on the whole space and site, and whether, you know, conservation and preservation doesn't need to expand beyond beyond what's there today. So I'm just, again, as, as in closing, would like to encourage the Army to take a comprehensive look at Fort McNair's future and to continue to work with NCPC staff and the district and other stakeholders. And I do want to thank my fellow commissioners for all their comments and, and input today, because I think it's been, it's been productive. So that being said, are there any further comments or questions by commissioners or comments from presenters? Here, oh, yes, Commissioner Cozart?
Thank you, I had a question, in her comments, Skylar referenced that Ms. Sullivan might have alternative language that could be added to the EDR, and I wanted to ask a question about if we, as a commission, wanted to modify the EDR. I wanted to get clarity about what that language might be, or clarity about if that language exists.
That was in reference to Commissioner Wright's comment about precedent-setting. If I understood correctly, Commissioner Wright, you had suggested making a comment on that, did I get that right?
I, 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 I I think we would be remiss if we did not include language that does note what an awful precedent this sets for federal historic preservation. Yes. I mean, without it, I, I'm voting no.
Okay, so what I had here, and this may not be strong enough, but advises the Army to consider the negative precedents associated with the demolition of these historic buildings and to undertake appropriate actions to address the issue. I will say that second part, I'm, I'm, we may, may stop it before the second part, so let me read the first part, which was advises the Army to consider the negative precedents associated with the demolition of these historic buildings. Associated with the demolition of these historic buildings.
I, I think.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Wright.
I think negative precedence, but also the, the broader implications for federal preservation policy writ large. I mean, I really, I really fervently believe this. This is, um, you know, uh, this is. This, it has very broad implications because if all a federal agency has to do is say, well, we can't afford it. Well, that everybody and their brother is going to be lining up to say, we can't afford it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. My question for Diane and staff then is, uh, would that be an amendment to a motion to approve the comments with that amendment? Approve comments on the master plan with that specific amendment and would, uh, Ms. Coster or Ms. Sullivan be able to read that motion to us? Or is there a motion or is there a commissioner who would like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Commissioner McMahon is, is hands up.
Yeah, I, I, I hear all this, but listen, no, quite all right. Thank you, uh, Adam Chair. Um, hey, I've got a concern, uh, with, with the, uh. Um, change that's just been moved, but not seconded, um, especially in the way that, uh. This right appropriately has identified the potential broad issue to NCPC of this general concept and especially as, uh. Um, uh, staff have pointed out is that in reality, um. We've noted this commissioner properly on some congressional action that is not part of an ADP. And yet now we're expecting the Army and the Department of Defense to go back and carry our water force. And what we're identifying as a major federal issue. I think there must be a better way to handle it. And I'm, I'm not sure I can support the, uh, the motion to amend. Over.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Uh, Ms. Coster, you had a comment?
Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, typical commission practice is first to move an amendment. Make sure we've got the language seconded and then vote on that. And then based on whether that advances. Forward, then we would take a motion on the amended. On the amended EDR. If that's helpful procedurally, but, um, and I'm. Happy also at any point to work with Ms. Sullivan to revise and reread the suggested language.
Thank you, Ms. Coster. Um, I see a hand up here for Commissioner May.
Yeah, um, I was wondering if we could hear the amendment once again, because I wanted to address Commissioner McMahon's concern if I could. So if you could read it.
Yep.
The simple version.
Okay, here we go. Advises the Army to consider the negative precedence and the broader implications for federal preservation with the demolition of these historic buildings.
So, um. I mean, there, there might be a different way to, um, to phrase that. But I would say that, I, you know, this is not putting the burden for fixing everything on, um, the Department of Defense. It, but it is sort of raising that flag. That this action has implications that go well beyond the particular project. And so, um, I mean, you know, like I said, maybe it could be tweaked a little bit so that Commissioner McMahon is more comfortable with it. Um, but I do, I agree, it makes sense to say something about it. I would not go, you know, that the, the additional language that. Miss Sullivan had originally read, I think, was, um, crossing, well, it was going a little bit too far, um, because we can't really urge. Specific action. And, and all we're doing is asking that this be considered in that context. And I think it would be informative to, um, the OD leadership to, to understand.
Right.
Where, what we think about it. So.
I agree.
Commission, thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm done. Yeah, for now.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dixon and then Ms. Coster?
Yeah, I just, I'm kind of curious. I thought our general counsel suggested that. This area of demolition was not within our scope. But now we are making comments in this document about it. And I'm not sure whether or not, you know, we don't need to get a little bit more clarity on whether we should or should not speak to this. Uh, and before we start making comments in our documents that we send out about demolition, I just don't know if we can, we can do that. I should do that.
But aren't, aren't we kind of splitting hairs because we're addressing the aftermath of demolition, which is very much part of this plan?
We are, but we are actually, uh. By doing that, we are, we are making a statement about the plan. Uh, and I, and I agree that we need to be concerned about the historical, but do we have a deal with demolition? Can we? To that, that area? I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Hewlett?
Um, yeah, I first, I'm used to the motion and the second, and then the discussion. So I was trying to second the motion. Um, as, as read by Ms. Sullivan, um. So, so that we could get to this point and just for purposes of discussion, which I guess we're already having, but I'm willing to second the motion on the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Hewlett. Ms. Coster or Commissioner Hewlett? Ms. Coster?
Um, I, unless, uh, I, I'm happy to just. At this point, say a motion was made by Commissioner Wright. Uh, seconded by Commissioner Hewlett and I will read it, uh, again. Um, to make sure that. I've got it here correctly, which is advises the Army to consider the negative precedent and broader implications. For federal historic preservation associated with the demolition of these historic buildings. And if, uh, and if you wanted, it could be these historic buildings at Fort McNair.
Thank you, Ms. Coster.
It looked like Ms. Sullivan wanted to add some.
I, I was just going to say, I think it's clear if we just moved, um, just said advises the Army to consider the negative precedence with the demolition of these historic buildings. And, and the broader implications for federal preservation. So just move the last piece up. Same words, just rearranging. Do you want me to say that again?
No, I think, uh, let me see if I got it here, which is advises the Army to consider the negative precedent. Or precedence, I think is what you had with the demolition of these historic buildings at Fort McNair. And broader implications for federal historic preservation. Um, and I will also look to, uh, Commissioner Wright, uh, since she's.
Yeah, I would say the net, the, uh, precedent set by, because it, I don't know, my English teacher is, it, my inner English teacher is frustrated.
And thank you very much, Commissioner Wright and Jill and, or Ms. Coster and, and Ms. Sullivan. Um, I, I am going to just point of information here is I am also. Um, as Commissioner Hewlett pointed out, I am accustomed to a motion being on the floor before discussion. And then, you know, moving, uh, to vote with an amendment. So I'm not clear, do we have a motion or amendment? It's been referred to as both. So is this a, is this our motion following the conversations?
I, I'm making a motion to amend the EDR with the language that Sullivan and Ms. Coster have just enumerated.
Thank you. And, and Commissioner Hewlett seconded that. Okay, thank you. So I, I think.
I, I do think, um.
I thought I heard it was a motion on the amendment itself. Did I hear that?
I just wanted to note, uh, Commissioner McMahon still had his hand raised. I apologize, Commissioner McMahon. So sorry.
No, it's, uh, this is, uh, one of the more contentious meetings we've had in quite a while. So, um, welcome aboard. Um, uh, I, I, I still listen to the language and I listen to development, especially some of Ms. Harris' comments later on about what the ADP includes and doesn't include. And I, I still disagree with the include, with an amendment to the EDR on, on this particular topic, on, on these three units at Fort McNair. Uh, yeah, Fort McNair. Um, I think it's setting a bad precedent for frankly. Uh, the DOD and a federal agency in common because we're, we're still going back and say, hey. You guys in the Army, we don't like what the Congress did. You guys should go fix it. And that's a paraphrase, but I think that's how it's going to be taken. And I'm not sure it's appropriate. Thank you.
Well, now that there's a, a motion on, on the floor and, um, I, I would like to ask if there's any further discussion related to Commissioner McMahon's comments. Well. Hearing none. Um, Ms. Coster, could you please, um, confirm the motion, the second and take the roll call vote?
Certainly. Uh, the motion was made by Commissioner Wright, the second by Commissioner Hewlett. Uh, and this is a motion to amend the EDR. To say advises the Army to consider the negative precedent set by the demolition of these historic buildings at Fort McNair. And broader implications for federal historic preservation. And with that, I'll take the roll call. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
No.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Sheriff Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dixon?
Abstain.
Uh, Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
Thank you. Um, the motion has carried and this concludes our open session agenda.
No, 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 wait a minute. I'm sorry. And now we actually, and, and now we have to actually vote on the EDR as amended.
My apologies.
So we will need a motion and second for that. That's okay. This has been a little, little more, um. Complicated than.
I move all of the motion as amended.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewlett.
Second that.
And that is seconded by Commissioner May. So the motion was made by, uh, Commissioner Hewlett, uh, to move the amended EDR. Seconded by Commissioner May and with that, Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Sheriff Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
So, uh, that motion has carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion has carried and, um, that this now concludes. Our open session agenda and our next regular commission meeting will be in, um, Thursday, March 2nd, 2003 at 1:00 PM. And if there is no further business, the session is now adjourned.